February eighth, twenty-fourth. First staff of the United States.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, prior to tonight's meeting, we had a second session. And, uh, let's see. Residents are reminded that this meeting is, uh, being recorded auditorily and vaguely. We ask that each resident hold their comments for three minutes. We, we will gavel you after three minutes. So everybody else has the opportunity to do it. We'll call Mr. Wurts.
Thank you, Mr. B. Ms. Book?
I'm here.
Mrs. Pugh?
Here.
Mrs. Iker?
Here.
Mr. Lichetti?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Zobrowski?
Here.
Mr. B?
Here.
Mayor Noah?
Here.
Mr. Herman is not with us this evening. We have Mr. Robert Dearden in his place. Mr. Usman?
Here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, prior to citizens' request, we know that a number of people that are here this evening may be for the West Club issue. So I would like our engineer to address that issue with that council as the side of the table.
As a summary of where we are, I had a little report for council at the last meeting. Our office has completed the research of the available docket, documents, the recorded plans and deeds. So we've identified two options for council to consider in their budgeting time and provide them with cost estimates for those two options. The first option is to extend the storm sewer from the existing sewer on Curry Road along the property lines, forty-six, fifty-five, nineteen West Club, thirty-two West Club, and forty-six, twenty-nine Curry Road. Construct storm inlets at the terminus of West Club Drive and essentially connect the system there. In our research, easements will be required from those four owners that I just mentioned just to extend that sewer from Curry to West Club Drive. Tree clearing will be required to physically construct that storm sewer. In constructing the storm sewer, the swell could be eliminated. There's no, would be no longer a need for it. The second option that I mentioned was to do all of the first option and extend storm sewers up West Club Drive and make the necessary pavement improvements and curbing that would be needed, essentially to bring it up to borough standards. However, that option would require numerous easements and agreements from the adjoining property owners. Because there is an agreement in place from nineteen seventy-two from the residents of West Club Drive that the roadway would not be widened any further or any wider than it is now and that storm sewers would not be constructed. So the estimates are in front of council for their consideration at their budget meetings. But there would be extensive work that would be needed and agreements and easements from the residents.
Because those budget meetings will take place until November. So, uh, Mary still was.
Well, Marty, are you gonna speak to him? I mean, I would, I would talk about what you've been involved in, but I don't want to take your time.
You want me to speak now? Sure.
Just state your name and record for the address, please.
Martin Spencer, furniture, twelfth furniture, Whitehall. This is a project that I got, um, that I was, um, got talked into about three or four months ago. My, actually about five, six months ago. My initial reaction was just to come up to council and start yelling and screaming and, you know, get it done, blah, blah, blah. But I did, I had done an awful lot of research and study on this, more than, more than I care to talk about because one of the reasons I never ran for Whitehall Council is because I'm truly not interested in your roads, the sewers. I'm not interested. It doesn't move. Education did. That was my passion. I, I've worked with Mayor Noah over the months to try to get something done. It's not moving as fast as it should. Government never does. The county, I had a verbal agreement with a deputy public works guy, and he's an old timer who, you know, I mean, twenty-five years ago, I would have called Tom Forrester's guy Harry Kramer, and in twenty-four hours, it would have been done. Today, nothing gets done because too many bureaucrats are walking around and everybody's afraid to make a decision. So after four meetings with him, I said to John Paul Mary, and none of this would be getting done without John Paul Mary, because they couldn't care less about me. Okay? Doesn't matter if you're chairman, doesn't matter if you're, you care about the issue. That doesn't matter. But Paul Mary is the county councilman, and they have to give him some respect. Not as much as they should. So anyway, I said to John, we're wasting time. All we do is meet with deputies. I need the director. So finally, the director decided to show up after all his vacations and time off, and he and about eight other people from the county. There was a couple million dollars worth of personnel on West Club Drive the other day. Their sole purpose was to come and say no. And there's just no way I'm accepting no for an answer from them or anybody else on this project. And, and I'll be interested in looking at your, your thing, and I'm glad you have options for the council. The, the bottom line is, the director goes, well, I don't know. I don't think it needs done, blah, blah, blah. And they had a deputy with a hundred pages of why it shouldn't be done. Well, finally, the chief of staff of, this is how ridiculous this project has become. The chief of staff of Sarah Emmerard, uh, his name is Grant something. I've known him for years. He's a political operative, and he's very, he's a very nice guy. Thank God he showed up because, you know, it was, it was not a good meeting. I told the director, if you can't make a decision on something as small as that, you should be fired immediately. And I told the deputy that also. I mean, how ridiculous it is not to have constituent service. Grant gave me his, Grant gave me his word that with, that it will be done. I'm gonna give them thirty days to get it done, or Mr. Paul Mary's gonna introduce a motion at county council for one lousy damn storm sewer. And that's how ridiculous that project. And, and Grant admitted, and so did some of the others, that fifteen percent of the problem on West Club comes from the county road on Brownsville Road. So if we get that, it starts solving a problem. But that problem is much more than just Brownsville Road. It has to be done and done right. And just, and a quick aside, when Ralph Kajic was a state rep years ago and they were doing that eighty-eight, fifty-one project, I said, I said to Ralph, let's get it done right. Well, we're gonna spend twenty-five million, but it would cost forty-five to do it right. Said, do it right. That project is, is, they've done almost nothing to ease the traffic down on fifty-one and eighty-one.
All right, we're good.
All right, we're good. Well, I'll be back next month, and we'll see, continue this project.
Thank you. Bev Jones.
Can I just say?
Oh, you did.
This is my first time doing this. I'm, my name is Bev Conrad Jones. I live at-
Could you state your residence, please?
One fifty-two Providence Way. I live in Grove Point. I'm here as a resident of Whitehall, a lifetime Baldwin Whitehall resident. I wanted to bring to your attention and ask for your advice and help. The hillside along Hamilton Road and the trail along Hamilton Road is something that has been a problem for Grove Point for the, for the three years that we've been there. The hillsides have been shifting, and this is something that we brought to attention to Grove or Penn Cove, and they either ignore that or say it's not their problem. Then, and most recently, the new trail that they put in, which has recently been approved by the borough, whatever material that they're using has also washed away just like the previous material has washed away. I have videos of the material washing down the hillsides. You can see that the material is now in our yards. You can see where the hillside has shifted, and I am not an engineer. I am an English teacher, so please forgive me if I don't use the proper terminology here. Whenever, if you, and I'm willing to share all of these videos with all of you and all of the pictures. And if you, even if you drive down Hamilton Road, you can see that they, they're clearly admitting that there's water issues because they put the sandbags all along Hamilton Road now. But if you walk along that trail, you can see where the water has, it rolls off of that trail and just goes straight down the hillside. It never even makes it into a drain. And to me, what is curious about that is that where you see that the water has run down over the hillside, it's also where those hillsides have shifted over these past three years. Not an engineer, but that just kind of, I don't know. It seems interesting to me that where the water runs straight down, the, the hillside has shifted. And like I said, I can show you, I'm willing to share with you the videos. I have a video during a rainstorm where you can clearly see it, and it mostly affects between houses one hundred through one hundred and fifty-eight on Providence Way. In the one, one fifty-eight Providence Way, you can even see where, in one of the videos, where the water will pool at the bottom of the hillside, and that land is kind of sinking in their yard as well. So we're just here because we know that Grove Point or Penn Cove has not received their bond back. They're not done there. And we just, we need your help to make sure that they fix that hillside and that trail and make sure that the water is not gonna damage our homes.
Well, Bev, Bev, you're not an engineer, but we happen to have an engineer.
Forgive my English.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind reaching out, but to address the trail question, trails were proposed when the plan was approved. The developer elected to use reclaimed asphalt for the trail and not the, uh, trail mix as approved. So they removed the asphalt, the miscellaneous asphalt, added the, the aggregate for the trail. I think that was the last time that it rained in, in Whitehall. It was the, the downpour on the Friday evening. And, uh, that section of Hamilton Road is not curbed. So the water ran off of Hamilton, and it did wash the trail off. Representatives from Penn Cove have been in touch with one of my project managers, Joe Galbreth. They're reviewing options. What they're proposing and considering is to replace the aggregate trail with concrete. So it'd be essentially a concrete sidewalk. I don't know if it makes sense to have that sidewalk along Hamilton. Have to be something, it'd have to be considered. Been in this problem areas. They're working on a solution. The, this council hasn't accepted the improvements over there. They're still working on providing all of the final documents that are needed for council to take action. However, I'm not aware of the problems with the hillside that you mentioned that would have to be something that we can look at. But I provided the contact information.
Okay.
So feel free to give me a ring, and we can provide you with additional updates.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bev. All right, Roxanne May.
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Roxanne Gray Walsh. I am at one sixty Providence Way. And just to piggyback, because I think Bev did a really great job of explaining our problem. But the reason why we are here today is because we are actually grateful that Whitehall has not returned the bond money to Penn Cove. Because this has been a problem since we moved in about three years ago. I'm a lifelong resident of one five-two-three-four, one five-two-three-six. Purchased that house because it sat on the land of Saint Francis Academy. I have never seen that hillside look as disgraceful as it does today. We are concerned. We all spent a lot of money for our homes. The tax benefits are great to Whitehall Borough. People are angry. People are upset. We had our annual HOA meeting in August. They came and they attacked. I wish you, the police officer, would have been there for us. So, you know, Bev and I, we talked to a wise man who's in the room. He said to, you know, come to the meeting, share our concerns with all of you, and really, we really hope that we can work with you and that you guys will push back on Penn Cove before handing over that bond money. So come, please, take a look at that hill.
Thank you, Roxanne. I'm sure we will. Let's go, we'll get on this. All right, Mayor Plussar.
My name's Hal Plussar, reside at four-six-four-seven Delverdale Drive. Several thousand dollars have been spent on storing documents from previous years that by existing Commonwealth guidance can't be destroyed. It is my understanding that no funds were allocated for this year's budget for this purpose. Additional funds have been, are being spent to copy these documents as well. Sensitive information requiring redaction may also require additional funding. How much time is, likewise, how much time has been spent by borough staff to support this particular effort? Taking a time away from their assigned responsibilities. And I realize a lot of people have that old caveat, all other duties, all additional duties as prescribed. What projects have been canceled or delayed due to the use of this funding? Projects that, that where funds were allocated. Money could be better spent to replace, just as an example, the window shades up in a community room. They're a disgrace overall. And since that's a public meeting area, people from all around are able to see that. It's a disgrace to the borough of Whitehall overall. Likewise, there's the old council room that is in real need of repair. As a member of the Whitehall Borough Historical Society, we're waiting until the floor and the walls and everything else have been taken care of. As a resident, homeowner, and taxpayer, I question this waste of borough funds. Borough council should be working for the present and the future, not the past. I just hope we don't have the Dead Sea Scrolls and the Magna Carta there where you're gonna have to hire somebody who knows old world, old world Aramaic or Middle English to translate this information. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jane Cassiato.
Jane Cassiato, five-three-four-eight High Grove Road. And piggyback on to Mr. Plussar. Um, I, oh, once a month, I put in a write-to-know request to find out how much money it is costing the borough. And the borough administration has monetized all the time, effort, and the, um, the expenses for doing this. Currently, the borough has spent seven thousand, six hundred, fifty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. And Ms. Iker still has a printing bill of two thousand, eight hundred, sixty-three dollars, fifty-eight cents. Now, that, if that bill is not paid, that means that the borough is almost, is shouldering almost ten thousand dollars to this point for items from the purge list. Where I work, when an account is over a hundred, eighty days late, their, their payment goes into collections. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Mike Andrews.
Hello, my name's Mike Andrews, and I am not a resident of Whitehall, but I own a property in Whitehall, rental property. The location is forty-seven, twenty-four Brownsville. And I had appeared in front of you in July. And I had requested a consideration for a sewage credit. Last fall, I experienced a five thousand, five hundred dollar water bill. And it was caused by a faulty toilet. And I had communicated with the water company, and they had given me a two thousand dollar credit, but they could never answer other questions. So they were real willing to give me a credit. And, and in my research then, of course, in December, I get a sewage bill. The sewage bill's six thousand dollars, covers three months. When I called borough, it turned into a finger-pointing contest. I was advised to call Jordan Tax Service. Then I called Jordan Tax Service, and I was advised to call Pleasant Hills Sewage Authority. I said, why would it be Pleasant Hills? I've owned this property for forty years. My parents owned it for twenty years prior to that. Never had any idea that that property on Brownsville Road and the other properties going down towards option supply, they're connected to a different sewage line than the rest of the community. They're connected to Pleasant Hills. So in talking to the representative from Pleasant Hills, she explained the billing process. You know, Whitehall sends them two payments for the water consumption, and their rate is determined off of the water consumption for these three hundred homes that are connected. In, in gathering this information, I learned that, first of all, the agreement between Pleasant Hills and Whitehall is very favorable towards Whitehall Borough. It's about three dollars less per one thousand gallons that they charge. And also, the service fee is less on a monthly basis, which if you equate that quarterly, it's six bucks compared to like thirteen or fourteen. But the bottom line is, the borough's made money on this process because they seem to have a third party do their billing. That third party is Jordan Tax Service. Jordan Tax Service charges these three hundred homes, the one I own and the rest of those people, they charge them the Alka-Sand rate. But the difference is, and I understand you could probably do that legally, but the one thing they don't afford to them is a sewage credit. Alka-Sand, when I called them and I said, what happens when you have an extraordinarily high sewage bill? We have a program, you have to send us your receipts. I give them my address, and that's when I first learned. You're, you're not under us. I said, so you have a sewage credit. I called the borough and find out they don't. So we've gone back and forth. I've talked to Irv from your law firm, and he's gotten back to me. I don't know if he's brought in this to your attention or not for a vote. But it needs to be given a consideration.
Well, he, we, well, Irv's gonna be here next meeting.
Okay.
He's gonna address council regarding this issue.
But I wanted you all to know, there's three hundred people here that aren't being treated the same as the rest of the community. And, and that is not fair. And along with that, the borough's benefiting from that contract with Pleasant Hills. Every, 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 twice a year. Okay, thank you for the conversation.
Let me, can I comment?
Sure.
So I'm surprised, Mike, to hear you say that there's a better arrangement with Pleasant Hills than Alka-Sand. The reason why I say that, I remember when the borough council finances were tight, they were gonna treat the Pleasant Hills homes, they would have paid a higher rate than would Alka-Sand. And I, I remember, I've only vetoed a couple of ordinances, and, and that was one of them. Because my belief was that everybody in Whitehall should pay the same, regardless of where their, you know, sewage goes. Where it goes, this place or that place. Everybody should pay the same. So I vetoed that ordinance. They, I, I was overridden by council, but ultimately, they put it back in so that everybody is, you know, paying the same rate in the borough. So if it's changed, you know, I don't know when that would have occurred.
I, I'm not asking for a change in the rate. I've been paying whatever rate they apply to my bill, and it has been the same as the other residents. But when you talk about amenities and you're saying, I'm in a situation where I have a six thousand dollar sewage bill. I'd like to get some help from the community since they're basically the sewage provider in this case. Has been no consideration. But if my property was located anywhere else other than on Brownsville Road, among those homes that are connected to that sewer line going to Pleasant Hills, I would at least have a credit provided.
So what you're saying is, is that all Whitehall residents are not being treated equally with regard to a sewage credit?
Right.
Most Whitehall residents get the sewage credit, but, but you do not.
Probably ninety-eight percent get the sewage credit.
Mike, you can wait till next meeting, I think we might have some more information for you.
Okay. But I know, just so you can give a consideration.
Whether or not you give this gentleman a free first name.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the solicitor first.
I feel horrible. That is a freak thing that happened, and, you know. And as a landlord, you can't go into the building. You have to give twenty-four hour notice. So there was nothing you could have even done.
It's just difficult gathering information from the water company, and it seems like the borough manager has that access. Other than that, they're not gonna provide me with a report where I can study it further and say, who else had this amount of volume of, you know, to see if, if there was something wrong with their equipment. And I sensed there was, but I could never prove that. And that's why they were willing to work with me.
You've been acting there long enough. Why don't you wait another meeting and see what we can do?
Okay. Thank you, Bev.
Lori Pickle.
Yeah, Lori Pickle, nineteen West Club Drive. I'd like to address these two ladies here. We've been dealing with water issue for twenty-four years. So they'll lose sight of that, but hopefully yours won't take that long. We're still dealing with the swell we heard about today, that they possibly are going to remove, fix the water problem, which is great to hear. Two different versions, A and B. My husband and I are in agreement that if we have to do something with our property to help out with the storm sewer, we will do that to help the neighbors and getting rid of the swell in Lori's heart. I'd like to thank Lori, Mayor Scott, Beth, Scott Stone, and Lacey here for usually, and listening to my concerns in meetings and outside of meetings and what you're trying to do to help us. And it's our hope, it sounds like we're getting closer each meeting that I come to, since this is my seventh in twenty-four years, I forgot to mention that at the beginning, and that something could be done in a positive nature for our street and our neighbors and getting rid of the swell in Lori's heart. So I'm hopeful of that. And then what Lori said about the people working on Brownsville. Third, I still, we, the people here, would like to have this room turned ninety degrees. I don't know why we're getting, I don't know why we're fighting about this and why this can't be done. I mean, to make it so nobody's back is towards, towards the audience. And if you do this, I think you would say, Lori, you know what? Lori, you were right. Nobody was I's teacher for thirty years, but also did your design prior, prior to that. So I do know about space planning. So if you can take this in consideration and continue to be in a positive nature with West Club Drive, my husband and I would appreciate you. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Lori. Yeah, that's all I ask. Anyone else? You're not saying she? Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move on.
Tanya Allen Smith, seven, twenty-four, one, fourth, on the bottom end. The steps we can do in Prospect Park and Wallace Park, I would like to see if we can get that on the agenda, maybe before the end of the year, to get on the streets, maybe. And also, the kids wanted to ask to see if, I know we had some issues with the soccer field that it wasn't lengthening or width or whatnot. But the kids requested maybe if we can get some soccer goals. I know we have to talk to the baseball association. They, they seem to just leave the property there, the field, and maybe if some of the residents can get access to the keys when we have events there from the borough, and we can hold the goals in the sheds or whatnot for the kids, maybe. They also requested maybe if we can do a volleyball, not necessarily sand, but if we can maybe mark it out in the field. I have actually a video I could show you and our post of the kids requesting or whatnot. And, and yeah, if we can get those steps condemned, because the kids aren't, you know, kids are kids. So they're still trying to get down those steps. You know, we don't want nobody getting hurt or anything else.
Appreciate the comments. Anyone else?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask, Tanya, can I ask you a real quick question? Um, the soccer nets, have you already gone to BWSA to ask?
Not yet.
Okay. Got it.
Is there a phone number that you, that contact information you have?
I mean, other than maybe what's on their, like, website or Facebook page? I don't have direct contact.
I might take you on our talk after the meeting.
Okay.
All right, gonna move on to the bills and payroll. Are we gonna let Mrs. Wurts do this this time?
Thank you, Mr. B. Administrative Services, Mrs. Pugh. In order. Planning and zoning, Mr. Lichetti. In order. Public Safety, Mr. B. In order. Public Works, Mrs. Iker. In order. Recreation, Mr. Zobrowski. In order. Library, Mrs. Thomas. In order. Storm Sewer Fund, Mrs. Iker. In order. Sanitary Sewer Fund, Mrs. Iker. In order. And Capital Projects Fund, Mrs. Pugh. In order. Would ask for a motion to approve the bills in the bill listed September eighteen, two thousand, point four, from the, uh, the general fund totaling three hundred, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-two cents, from the storm sewer fund totaling two thousand, five hundred dollars and no cents, from the sanitary sewer fund totaling twenty-four dollars and fifty-seven cents, and from the capital projects fund totaling six thousand, three hundred, twenty dollars and no cents.
So move.
Second.
The motion's made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
I would also ask for a motion to ratify checks and transfers from the general fund in the amount of three, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred, thirty dollars and ninety-five cents, and from the payroll fund in the amount of sixty thousand, eight hundred, forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents for a grand total ratification in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred, seventy-seven dollars and twenty-three cents. Is that heard?
Second.
I would like to have it noted for the record that this is in accordance with the Public Works Union Contract and not in accordance with the Whitehall Borough Budget.
Okay, motions made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. The motion carries.
I would also ask for a motion to approve pay goal for the pay date of September sixth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of two hundred, one thousand, three hundred, forty-two dollars and forty-two cents. Or, excuse me, forty-four cents. So move.
Second. Yeah, motion's made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Close. Motion carries.
And there isn't overtime list attached.
Thank you, Marty. Approval of the minutes? I get a motion to approve the minutes for the last meeting?
I move to approve the minutes from the meeting of September fourth, twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Yeah, the motion's made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I would like to discuss, and I know this is something small, and I appreciate that this has been added to the minutes as I had requested in our discussion last time, if it could be possible that the color version of this map be posted. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Noted. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, moving on to the marriage report, my favorite time.
Yeah. And I won't try to give you a report either. All right, so first item I have is a, to say that we do not have an animal report for August. And so we will, the chief is gonna look into this. These reports are becoming a little slowly, more slowly than were used to, so he's gonna find out what's going on. Restoration work continues on Baptist Road. Crews will continue to perform base, curb, and driveway repairs for another week. Asphalt paving is tentatively scheduled for the first week of October. So if you're concerned about Baptist Road, please share this information.
Mr. Mayor, clarification, that would be curb to curb?
Uh, yes, yes. From Hamilton to Waver.
It's got progressively worse this past week, so thank you, that's excellent.
They are, they're working. Seven to five, seven P M. to five A M., I think it, mostly Monday through Thursday. What they're doing with the base repair, where they did the work, they have to dig that back up and make sure it has the proper base in it, so when they pave it, the road doesn't sink. And then they have to fix the curb cuts when they went into the properties to replace the lateral lines, and also when they put in new fire hydrants and shut off valves. All right, solar assist LED flashing lights were installed on the new stop signs along Cassidy and Doverdale Drive. The purpose is to alert motorists of the new signs. The LED lights will be removed by the end of October. Is there a report from the Whitehall Fire Company? Skip Brown, Secretary?
Yes, Mr. Vee, thank you. And again, I like to offer my personal sympathies to the fire companies, it was an awesome thought.
Thank you.
I was honored to know him as a gentleman. Hey, our fire call total for so far this year is four hundred eighty-six calls since December first. There's thirty-six calls since I gave the last report on August nineteenth. The shift crew responded to over fifteen daylight calls. Our current membership is still thirty-three active firefighters. We want to ask the residents to use caution when charging battery-powered devices. Do not overcharge items such as power tools, scooters, laptop computers, and other lithium battery-powered products. When leaving your home, make sure these chargers are unplugged and check to make sure the batteries being charged are not hot. Two weeks ago, over sixty people were left homeless in Brooklyn, New York City by someone who was not charging their scooter properly. Scooter's lithium battery caught fire and destroyed apartment building because of it. These fires are difficult to put out. We have to use a special agent. Water does not work on them. I'm sure people have seen the car fires. It's the same thing with regular lithium batteries. Our fund drive has received one thousand five hundred six donations that total one hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred sixty-seven dollars. We have sent out a second reminder mailing to homeowners who have not donated. There will be email blasts and social media posts. Last year at this time, we had a total of one hundred seventeen thousand, ten dollars with one thousand five hundred thirty-three donors. So our revenue's up, our donations are slightly down by twenty-seven. So, so far this year it's going good, so thank you for your help. Presently, we have an outdoor package, winner's choice package, which is a five hundred dollar giant eagle gift in Amazon cards, and a five hundred dollar Alligate New Arms Gift Certificate. We're also doing instant lottery tickets up for grabs on our tip board site. So far, the instant lottery tickets have been our most popular and fastest-selling raffles. The fire company participating in the Touch a Truck event on September eighth. Our new Chiefs vehicle is now in service. And just as a reminder, our next monthly meeting will be one week later on Monday, September twenty-third, instead of the sixteenth, because some people were on vacation. Not just myself.
Thanks. Is there any else?
Can I ask, Skip, will there be a mailing to the businesses of the?
We already said a mailing, but we are, instead of sending, we're mailing, we're gonna hit like the higher volume businesses for, you know, for that.
Okay. I could mention the lithium batteries. That's a big issue with waste management as well. These batteries are being discarded, go ahead, catch them, Mark. So be careful with that as well.
Okay, I had two other items. One is that the Whitehall Borough Historical Society had an event in which John Delano spoke, and I can look around this room and see the heads nodding. He was fantastic. And I, you know, we all know, you know, what his position is, PK. But to show you how even balanced he was in his presentation, someone asked me, "Jim, do you know what party John Delano is?" I couldn't tell by his presentation. And I think that speaks volumes for the caliber of the person that we had. So we're very honored to have him coming up in October, and I'm telling you, you don't wanna miss this, is Tom McMillan talking about his book on Flight Ninety-Three. He did personal research, 'cause he had been writing books about, you know, Gettysburg, and of course, there's no original people around to be able to get the information. And so knowing that, he thought the story of Flight Ninety-Three should be told. And so he interviewed family members, you know, people that were involved with the plane on that day. And there's a number of revelations that you will hear about. I don't wanna spoil his thunder, but misconceptions to public thought about that day that, in his research. So how do you remember the date on that? Is that October? Eric, do you know the date?
It's the third, I believe it's the second or third, Thursday in the month. I don't have the date in front of me, I apologize.
Check the website and don't miss that presentation, because you will thank me at the next, at the meeting following that I, you know, told you to go and see that. All right, and lastly, I appreciate Skip, your comments, and I wanna thank the Whitehall Police Department, Whitehall elected officials, Whitehall Fire Company, staff who came to the funeral, all the cards that, you know, our family has received from my father. He was a special guy, and we honored him in two thousand fifteen as the Person of the Year. He's worked in, you know, homes and institutions all over the, you know, the city of Pittsburgh, and I think we gave him a great send-off, but thank you very much for all your prayers and support. I appreciate it.
Any questions? Okay. I want to move on to the solicitor.
Mr. President, I have nothing to add to the agenda.
Uh, question?
Question?
Not a question, but October twenty-fourth is the date. So thank you, Hannah.
We're out of where they're being.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make that part of my report.
I should be reporting, Mr. Russell.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have a report for council dated September thirteenth. A few items to touch on this evening on page two under section two, the operation and maintenance. For, the residents of forty-two oh seven McKee Drive have requested a backwater valve. We've received all of the required documentation, and they have signed their letter of understanding. So to get the backwater and valve installed, we solicited proposals from three different contractors. Only two were received. Ruder Ruider Service Company submitted a low bid of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Soul Line Construction submitted a bid of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. So the recommended motion is to award the forty-two oh seven McKee Drive backwater valve to Ruder Ruider Service Company in the amount of fourteen thousand, five hundred dollars and no cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
On item four on page two, Overlook Park, just to make council and the public aware. First American, the plumber handle electric and control climate systems have completed all of their punch list items. Caliber Contracting started work on making corrections to the asphalt parking area this morning, and they are working to have the remaining section of railing installed on the stairway. So if all goes well, the project could be completed earlier this week. We are working with them to make temporary measures to the stairs if the fabrication for the railing cannot be completed. So at that time, then the park would be open.
Say that that way louder for me.
So at that time.
Overlook, you know, I've been harping on this, folks.
The park could possibly be open.
Possibly open, like within the next two weeks.
Yes.
Little kids.
So Caliber submitted a pay application number nine. It's in order. We recommend approval of that pay application. Work completed under this pay app number nine. Obviously included the landscaping, restoration, excavation, storm, sewer work, handrail, and general supervision. So the recommended motion is to approve pay application nine in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars and twenty-six cents for the Overlook Park Improvement Contract Number One, General Construction to Caliber Contracting Services Incorporated, subject to receiving all required documents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made, second, all in.
I have a quick question. Yes, I think I heard that you said that the paving to the parking area of Overlook Park would be done. I think that you meant pedestrian walkway?
No, I meant that the paving of the parking lot, the paving was previously completed. However, those spots were identified. Essentially, there are puddles that have to be addressed, requiring them to lower and then let and ban hold. So that asphalt is being rebuilt and being replaced. Contractor will then, after those repairs are made to that section of the upper parking lot, will then seal the entire parking area and access drive to the restroom.
So you're saying that there's an upper parking lot in Overlook Park?
No, it would be the parking lot adjacent to the newly constructed restroom. There's only one parking lot.
You mean there's only one parking space?
The bytune, let's call it the bytune in this area.
Okay, all right, sure. For those who do not know what that word is, I had to look it up recently. It means an asphalted area.
Thank you, William. Motion's made, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
Just a quick update on page three. The phase two improvements for overlook the stairs, the bids will be, the bid opening will be October ninth. Under number ten, under the pool construction. So only one bid was received at the bid opening on September eleventh. B and R Pools and Swim Shop submitted a base bid price of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred dollars, and an alternate bid price of five thousand, eight hundred dollars. The bid received exceeds the pool cover budget. Tabulations and actual reports for your review. We recommend that the base bid and alternate bid be rejected and the project be re-advertised. So the recommended motion is to reject the bids received from B and R Pools and Swim Shop and re-advertize the pool cover project.
What was the bid?
Fifty, sixty was the budget, yes.
So, for instance, two recent pool cover projects have been bid on the eastern side of the state. Those bid prices were slightly larger pool than what you have here, range from forty-five to forty-eight thousand dollars. So Mainline was a contractor who provided information on pool cover liner and pool cover materials to us during the spec development stage of the project. They did not submit a bid. However, they shared with us that their cost for the pool cover in this application, there were two different types that we spec. One pool cover, their material cost was eighteen thousand, and the other was twenty-three thousand, so the bid's excessive, whatnot.
So, comparison, so that company that spec eighteen thousand, this company that put in a bid said their... Am I reading this correctly?
The install price was one hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Right, but their, their just material price was eighty-nine thousand, whereas the other company had said eighteen thousand. So everybody understands why we're rejecting this grossly large bid.
Yeah, what is, why is the bid so high? Is it because of the odd shape of the pool, or, and then, does Brentwood have a pool cover also? 'Cause I know their pool was installed not that long ago, I wasn't sure.
I am not certain of Brentwood.
Brentwood does not mine all.
Does not have a.
We might be able to contact them at Neville Night, 'cause I know that's where we sell pool cover. I know they have pool cover there.
I would like to suggest we do a little more thinking about this pool cover. When, it kind of came up, and it sounds like a really good idea. Felt we could save some money by not draining the pool and replacing it. But there are some questions about, you know, the pool still has to be winterized, the equipment still has to be winterized. How do you attach the pool cover? Is that going to affect... Are those hooks or whatever you're gonna put the cover on to gonna be there all summer long? I just have some questions that I would like to have answered before we move ahead with that.
We can sort of clarify that for you. There will be fasteners that are installed into the concrete, but I believe that there's a cover that goes over that so that it doesn't become a trip hazard. Don't be, but I'll clarify.
If it's not level, it might become a.
Could possibly not.
I just would like to hear a little more about it.
Anyway, I'd like to spend some money on something else.
We didn't anticipate that price. All right, so get a motion rejected. Did I make a motion?
I'll motion for that, so moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
And then, we revisit this budget time for something, or whenever?
I think we have to, it's wrong, we have to talk about it.
Okay, on page four, just make council where Merza solar panels. Again, it's going to be bid out on October ninth. And then one item that I did not list in the report is the Doverdale Stormwater Tank. I did inspect that tank on the twelfth of September. The good news is the tank is in good shape, and relatively speaking, it's clean. I was expecting a material buildup that we would have to clean and get it out, but there is no action needed on the tank.
What kind of good news?
Budgeted, how much for that potential cleanup?
Fifty.
Fifty, announcing we're not expecting that. Wonderful.
I conclude my report. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the members here? Okay, the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Vee. The first item by report is a request from our tax collector. Included in the packet, there is a letter from Mrs. Veen that is requesting council consider raising compensation for the position of tax collector. Further homeowners, charges such a change must occur at least twelve months in advance of election day, and be done in the ordinance. So if council is amenable to her request, the borough solicitor can draft an ordinance. And that is the motion that you have before you direct the solicitor to accept such action.
I have a question, not particularly right on to raising the salary, but in terms of the tax collector's role with issuing property tax refunds, I know this is the most appropriate time to bring it up, but we had budgeted thirty thousand for refunds this year, which I believe was a lot higher than the previous year.
Yes.
And so far this year, we've been given one hundred and sixty thousand dollars in refunds, so we're collecting less and we're giving more back, which is kind of a double whammy. What's the tax collector's role with all of that? Is this?
When assessments or reassessments happen at the county level, that information's given to the tax collectors. That is then manually entered into her system. There's just quite a lot of, you know, administrative work that she has to do before those numbers are then given to the respective entities, in this case, the school district and the borough. And then what you can see on our bill list is the actual refunds of the borough cutting those checks. So there's a lot of administrative work for each of those, and as you can... So there's a lot of administrative work for each of those, and as you can imagine with what's going on at the county, there's quite a lot of those that range from a couple hundred dollars. A big reason why our refunds this year are so high, we had two properties in particular that were massive refunds. South Hill Square appealed, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of refunds across three tax years. And then most recently, Cassie Village had an appeal for two tax years that was just under twenty thousand. It's on tonight's bill list, actually. But beyond those two large properties, I'm sure some of you may have yourself appealed your tax assessment. And we see that continuously from the tax collector giving us reports monthly.
Is that what you think might continue to grow over the next couple of years? I know it's kind of hard to guess, but until county council does anything.
Until, you're correct, until the council, county council or the county does something or the court step in, yes, I think that we'll see more of this. There was a most recent ruling, I think two weeks ago, about now they're calling it a neighborhood common level ratio. Completely unclear what that means. And then the common level ratio itself keeps dropping if you follow it. It was eighty-six at one point, then it went to the sixties. I think now it's fifty-four. So there's a lot of variation happening and a lot of different moving parts between lawsuits, new, you know, leadership at the county itself. Yeah, I don't see it changing so.
Okay, we can get a motion to direct the borough solicitor to draft an ordinance regarding the compensation for the tax collector. So move.
Second.
On, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
And then next up on my report, I have two grants for the local share recovery account. We spoke about these previously. First up, I have the application for the purchase of a bucket truck for Public Works. As you have that in your packet there, I would ask for a motion to read it in its entirety before adoption.
Move. Second. Okay, on, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
A resolution applying for a local share assessment grant. Be it resolved that Whitehall Borough, Allegheny County hereby requests statewide local share assessment grant of one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the acquisition of a bucket truck. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate Courtney M. Works, Borough Manager, and Linda J. Book, Council President, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between Whitehall Borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining this, obtaining the requested grant. In witness from I, Courtney M. Works, duly certified Secretary of Whitehall Borough, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and corrupt copy of a resolution duly adopted by a majority vote of the council of the borough of Whitehall at a regular meeting held September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of the borough of Whitehall and remains in effect as of this date. In witness thereof, I fix my hand and attach the seal of the borough of Whitehall.
Need a roll call?
I would need a first motion to adopt resolution ten forty-one.
So move.
Second.
On, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, roll call. Do we need a roll call in here?
Yes, it is a roll call. Ms. Book?
Yeah.
Mrs. DePew?
Yes.
Mrs. Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Luchetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Bee?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
I have another resolution for a local share assessment grant, and this one is for the ADA compliant pathway at Highland Park. So I would ask for a motion to read it in its entirety.
So move.
Second.
On, say aye.
Aye.
Read again, please.
A resolution applying for a local share assessment grant. Be it resolved that Whitehall Borough, Allegheny County hereby requests the statewide local share assessment grant of one hundred thousand three hundred eighty dollars from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for the installation of an ADA compliant by two minutes walkway at Highland Park. Be it further resolved that the applicant does hereby designate Courtney M. Works, Borough Manager, and Linda J. Book, Council President, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between Whitehall Borough and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. I, Courtney M. Works, duly qualified Secretary of Whitehall Borough, Allegheny County, Pennsylvania, hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and corrupt copy of a resolution duly adopted by a majority vote of the council of the borough of Whitehall at a regular meeting held September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and said resolution has been recorded in the minutes of the borough of Whitehall and remains in effect as of this date. In witness thereof, I fix my hand and attach the seal of the borough of Whitehall this eighteen day of September. So I'd ask for a motion to approve resolution ten forty-two.
So move.
Second. Roll call.
Ms. Book?
Yeah.
Mrs. DePew?
Yes.
Mrs. Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Luchetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Sobrowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Bee?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, good.
Next up on my report, just an update on the administrative side. The administrative fax line, which I'm sure many of you use, has been in the process of being moved from a traditional phone fax line to an electronic e-fax one. There will be no disruption to service, change in any of our number, noticeable change from users on either end, but the cost savings for this are forty-five dollars a month. Fax lines are crazy expensive. So just wanted to put that out there. Whitehall Public Library and the police will retain their traditional lines in order to meet their unique needs. And then last but not least, I unfortunately have to announce that Alyssa Cleed from the Shade Tree Commission has noted that she will not be seeking another four-year term on the Shade Tree Commission. Her term ends the end of this year, so there will be a vacancy. And I ask that council advertise, authorize advertisement of this vacancy.
So move. Second.
I object. I object not to the resignation. You're done a wonderful service. However, what happens when people will advertise the the vacancies around this borough, even if it's for a vacancy in any of the, the boards, excuse me, or commissions, it has to go through Ms. Wards and Ms. Wards alone. So I, I do not want that to be the case in this case because I, I think that this is, should be an organization that should be able to grow organically and be able to discuss these things with current members of the Shade Tree Commission if they wish to, to serve with the Shade Tree Commission. So I'm gonna vote no for that reason.
I'm not opposed to the Shade Tree Commission bringing a recommendation to us. I don't know if that would be better suited for you.
Exactly. It should not be a matter of the Borough Council to decide, and it should not be a matter of the Borough Manager to go ahead and scream those.
The motion is not to make any decision.
It's to advertise.
The motion is just to advertise, to let people know that there is a vacancy.
Sure, there's a vacancy.
Yeah, so, so much for that.
Did we get a, did somebody make the motion?
I believe there's been emotions, this motion has stopped.
Okay, on, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
No.
Okay, so it's six one, I assume.
Well, I'm not opposed. I wouldn't, do you have anything you'd like to say as a representative of the Shade Tree Commission?
Or advertising, I feel.
Yes, we, we thank the Whitehall Borough for advertising. We do get inquiries to Shade Tree Commission ourselves about open positions. So we pass those along to them as recommendations because, as Ms. Iker points out, we are more aware of the skills that we are looking for within the Shade Tree Commission. So I would say it's a partnership, and if it works well, we don't have a problem if the way it's working.
And I'd like to just comment that Mrs. McCray and I actually met this morning about a number of grants that we're partnering on. She is, she and the Shade Tree Commission are huge assets, especially in this grant writing season. And one of the things that Mrs. McCray informed me of today is that they are looking for a different type of volunteer than they previously had. And I had asked her to send language for the skill set they're looking for so that we can advertise appropriately to meet their needs. So I'm looking forward to hearing that from Mrs. McCray.
Yes, thank you, sir. Donna, thank you for the comments. Okay, is there anything else?
That's all that I have.
Okay, Assistant Manager.
Did you not have a report?
Oh, good for you.
There's any reports.
Wait, wait, before you move on, I have to properly acknowledge, this is a phenomenal borough.
Yeah, it really is.
Borough bulletin. And Alyssa has finally come back. So, you know, I've been, I've been reading it and I've been saying, wow, wow. So I didn't know if it ever came up, Alyssa, but I think you should be, get some credit.
Good job.
Send it to the board once they can see it.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the committee reports. Public Works, Ms. Iker.
All right. As of standard practice, I did not discuss anything with any member of the Public Works staff because only the Borough Manager and the Borough Manager alone may do so. I have respected her wishes and the wishes of this council to go ahead and make sure that there is the hiring process and the advertisement of the hiring process and the decision to not advertise in a public for a public works laborer. However, two individuals had come up to me to say, hey, I put in an, an application for that. What is the status? I had to say, whoa, I have nothing to do with that. That's all Ms. Wards. You have to ask specifically Ms. Wards. Ms. Wards has also went ahead and put in for, for the bucket truck. Thank you very much. There has been a number of budgetary things that, that do fly across what we do as a member of council. And sometimes it goes to the matter of sanitary sewage products and sewer projects. And as of tonight, we were talking about the Doverdale Sewage Project where there's a tank. One of my right to know requests that is under such controversy is the fact that I would like to know why we cannot have the information presented to me who is the person who approves all of the public works, the storm sewer and sanitary sewer budgets. The information of what was done in the Doverdale project. What is it that we are spending, that we have spent three and a half million dollars on? And how much are we continuing to, to pay over premiums and interest over the years due to the fact that this is an adjustable rate? I have stated over the past year that this is, in total, if you add all the loans together, approximately ten million dollars. The audit of two thousand twenty-three proves me correct. That's exactly what it was. So, as I would like the right to know as myself, as a councilperson, as a person who has always believed in open access, open government, and open source, that it is something that I ran on, this very transparency, and by golly, I'm doing it. I am doing it. It has been noted for the record many times that certain people have expressed interest in my right to know activities in a way to somehow try to quellch my ability to gain access to these records. I had to borrow the, the records that were prepared for Ms. Scheffler at her expense to discuss with our borough engineer here the matter of Felix Drive that was a project that got resurrected after thirteen years ago. It's not prehistoric records that we were looking for. The historical society alone should be interested in the fact that there have been all these storm sewer projects. We've got storm sewer projects that we would wish that we would have had some records regarding whether or not that, that swell was done in, in certain ways. But we don't have those records. Why? Because they were purged. They were purged. Why? Because of previous councils. I can't do anything about that, sir.
That's enough.
Sir, 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 no, 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 no. I'm going to continue. I'm gonna continue in my report. Mr. Smith, can you please distribute this paper to anyone who's interested? The public works salaries were not appropriately budgeted in the twenty twenty-four budget. Despite my many attempts to meet with the finance director and to be able to explain this to Ms. Wards that this is completely inappropriate to go ahead and hide this material. Therefore, therefore, I am exposing as a whistleblower, not as a representative of the Borough of Whitehall. I am not going to be a figurehead of this organization. I serve the people of.
Resign. Public safety.
Two hundred K, two hundred K, we shorted the budget. Two hundred K for public works laborers.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we need some explanation here.
There's not a shortage in the budget. There is a typo. There is, there's not a shortage. The money is there. The money is budgeted. Our staff is being paid appropriately. I would know from them or their wives if they weren't. There is a typo. It was in a keystroke error when putting the budget together. You know, it's quite a large document. A one was put where three should have been. That is all. The money is there. People are being paid. It was noted. Mrs. Iker brought it to our attention. But it is a keystroke error. It is not a financial error.
Okay, you've explained it very well.
Budget is a plan. It's not fixed in stone. We go over in some items, we go under in some items. There's always money there to provide for the borough services. This is not an issue.
So with a hundred percent certainty, all public works pensions are, okay?
Has nothing to do with the pension. We're happy, we're happy to talk about the pension. Since it came up.
No, I was just curious.
Okay, well, well, it was reported at the last meeting, but I'll say it again. The non-uniform pension is overfunded. So not, you know, I mean, we're, we're even, you know, we're better than, than good with the non-uniform. The uniform is at, I believe, ninety-one percent, which is a.
I think it's a little less, but I don't think.
Little less, all right. But whatever, the statement was made that it's, you know, at the highest level in terms of pension.
It is healthy for the police department.
Yeah, and that's the uniform, okay? So, so the, the item that was brought up was the, had to do with the non-uniform employees. And clearly, that pension is more than funded. So there isn't an issue.
Tim, we just discussed last meeting, right?
Yeah.
So next time around, can I come to that meeting?
You can always come to that.
Well, last time you said I could come and then.
I did.
Before we go to public safety, I'd like to say something nice about Public Works instead of all of this.
Okay.
This word. And I, this is a steal from your thunder, Mr. Sobrowski, yours is ours. But my wife's a record member and she had seen pictures of a awning or arch that was built. I don't know if some of you saw this on Facebook. It was like teaser pictures. She saw a picture and that was the first thing she told me when she got home was, just you gotta check this out. But this big awning that comes apart and will be a part of different events around the community. It'll be decorated in certain ways. And I just wanna give appreciation. I think it was words you said, all of Public Works was a part of this, but Mr. Donny Medea was the big designer leader and directed the end of everything going on. So I appreciate the hard work that you guys are doing. It's not, it's not missed.
Well said.
Did his father teach him everything he did?
Yeah, that news has been so well, let's go on. Public safety.
Yes, please, let's eat your tart. All right. Public safety report, and, from Mr. Bee here. Whitehall Borough County President, Public Safety Members, and Representatives from the Whitehall Fire Company were recently invited to attend a meeting of representatives from Brentwood, involved in boroughs, and the respective volunteer fire companies to discuss the state of firefighting in our municipalities. It was a very informative and respectful meeting. For Mr. Bee, I would like to call for a public safety committee, I would like to call a public safety committee to meet. to meet with the Whitehall Fire Chief and President to further discuss this at the next Public Safety Meeting, which is next week?
Twenty fifth.
Yeah, September twenty fifth at five P M. Additionally, the Chief reports, our two new police vehicles were delivered to TriStar Ford last week. They will soon be taken to Valero Service to have emergency equipment and police graphics installed in them. These vehicles have been on order since fall of 2023. The Chief requests council's permission to place orders for two 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utilities to ensure on-time delivery next year. These vehicles will be purchased through the state bid contract and no money would be due until the vehicles are delivered in 2025. So I'd like to present a motion to authorize the Chief of Police to order two 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utilities from TriStar Ford.
Motion's been made. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Just a thank you. Okay, any questions for Public Safety? Not move on to administrative services?
No report.
No report? You sure?
I'm waiting for parks.
Oh, okay. Planning and zoning.
The Planning Commission met last Wednesday, September eleventh. The Commission discussed definitions and regulations for motor vehicle repair shops and tobacco shops. The Commission will continue its work on prospective zoning amendments regarding uses in commercial zoning districts at its October ninth meeting. The Commission will also review a draft 2025 work plan. At the last meeting, an issue came up that I'd like to ask for council's direction. This question came up regarding, from the Planning Commission, because of an email that was sent, that was made to the zoning officer, Mr. Scott Dele. The request was for zoning information for medical marijuana dispensaries in Whitehall. As we know, Whitehall does not have anything addressing it in the zoning code and the Planning Commission is looking for direction from council on this matter. So my question for council is, should we be directing the Planning Commission to create a zoning regulations for permitted use of medical marijuana dispensaries in the borough? I think it should happen since we're getting requests, we're already behind the eight ball. So getting ahead of it as much as we can now is.
I think it's what's happening, it's happening out there.
Yeah, I'm looking at something, something on paper.
Okay, I will let Planning Commission know that this will be a topic that they will focus on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another update, zoning hearing board, they met last night and took the following actions. They affirmed the determination of the zoning hearing, the zoning officer of an appeal at four, five, four, one Country Club Drive. The applicants appealed to denial of an accessory used building permit by the Borough's zoning officer pursuant to the maximum height requirements in the zoning code. They also held a hearing for a case at Casti Village. The applicant requests a variance to allow an enclosed freezer cooler addition at Gianna Via Restaurant to approach into an required yard in Formul Lot. Where they both denied, or? The first one was denied, the hearing was just held for the second one yesterday. So the decision is not.
Thank you, Chris. All right, library, please follow us.
Yes, we'll have a library report in just a moment, but I also sad to announce that a member of our Library Board, Zahania, has taken a new position and will be moving out of the community. She's leaving us, out of state. So we are, I put a motion before the council today to appoint Melissa Jones to the Library Board to complete, to replace Zahania's Akari's term. She will complete out her term at this time. Melissa comes to us as a resident of Whitehall since 2011. She raises her kids here, she is an active member, visiting the library as well as volunteering at the library and within the community. So the Library Board has their own extensive process of advertising and requesting and reviewing applicants for those that are interested in serving on the Library Board. And they put Melissa Jones forward to council tonight for approval, so.
You'll make a motion, you'll be the second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Welcome, Ms.
All right, and we have Nerius Chancellor here as our Library President, Library Board President, to give us an update.
Okay, thank you for approving, Melissa. This is Love Your Library Month and it's going very well for the library. Our Love Your Library television appearance was a nice bonus to the opportunity for the library to show themselves off. They were on Pittsburgh Today Live. And Paula did a gift, of course, a great job talking about the library and what we have going on at the library. So that was a nice little bonus for us. The Night of Magic fundraiser is sold out, that's for this Friday. So if you didn't get your ticket, you're gonna miss out, it'll be a lot of fun. The first of three scheduled dine-ins happened last week. Three hundred and seventeen dollars was made from Comanche Brothers and Panera's and Chipotle are on deck for September the nineteenth and then the twenty ninth. When you eat at those restaurants on those days and tell them you're from the library, then the library gets a percentage of the sales for that night. Local Eagle Scout candidate Emmett Smith has delivered three more indoor little free libraries to three of our outreach sites. That's Mother of Mercy, Good Shepherd, and Tender Care. We now have little free libraries at all the parks and several other sites in Whitehall and in some of our daycare sets. It's been a great community effort with the Scouts and the Book Drive and a zero cost because it was all through grants and then volunteer work. And as an aside, Paula did say that these boy scouts that she worked with were the best organized, the best supervised, and the hardest working volunteers she had ever had. Due to our pre-existing partnership with Pitt's Cyber Institute, originally introduced to Paula by the mayor, Whitehall Public Library was asked to partner with the University of Pittsburgh on a project focused upon building upon the public's trust in libraries and using the trust to foster better practices for information consumption. Whitehall Public Library is listed as a partner in their recently published resource guide and one of our librarians, Sarah Scott, has created a great deal of the social media content for the various libraries who are involved in this to share library trust and information consumption. And Pitt and W A P L will be applying to present this collaboration to future library conferences. They hope to take this on the road and explain how they did it and what they're doing at the libraries. And anybody even.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Looking forward to this week.
I know.
This week's festivities, it's gonna be great.
Hey, recreation. We're gonna talk this, Mr. Soborowski. Are you sure?
Thank you. Bingo is back, so we take a break over the summer, because there's a lot going on. So our first bingo is September twenty sixth at noon in the community room. Ten dollars, it includes twenty games of bingo, lunch, dessert, and a bottle of water. Registration is required, and there's only a few spots left. Usually, once we get into one, you don't have any spots. So if you get on the schedule now, you should be good till May. Fall Fest will take place on September twenty eighth from eleven to four. Our first annual soup cook-off that was postponed will now be during Fall Fest at eleven o'clock. Contestants will serve up their best soups, chowders, and bisque. If you're interested in entering your soup, you can find the registration on the website. If you're interested in being a judge, you can also come. It's two dollars to participate. You receive a spoon and a voting card and the contestants will serve you with their soups. Generation Gap is our performance from twelve to two. Our activities throughout the day include guessing a giant pumpkin, weight, crafts, vendors, food, and more. And like Mr. Luquette said, we do have our wonderfully created backdrop that we believe be using this year. If you saw the magazine from last year, our fall setup was the cover. So we're doing something a little bit different. So if you don't want to come and do the other things, you can come with your family and take some great fall photos for maybe some Christmas cards or any type of holiday that you celebrate. Lastly, the Recreation in Denise at the Children's Library will be partnering in a Birds of a Feather from Acheva's Early Intervention. Birds of a Feather is a preschool readiness playgroup. It's an inclusive playgroup. It's a learning environment for children to prepare for the transition into preschool and beyond.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What's the status on the possible pumpkin drop?
I don't know if that'll be this year, there's a lot of logistics in order to that. I did not reach out to the fire company to see if the weight of the pumpkin would be able to be supported by that. When we were at our Recreation meeting, Mr. Soborowski did mention about doing a giant pumpkin drop. The logistics were a little bit too, it would be really cool, it would be fun. The logistics for the weight of the pumpkin, the drop, and the environment, how the items would be cleaned, because obviously we do have a deer management problem, so. Cleaning and feeding the deer is not what we would love to do, so we would have to see how those items would follow. So maybe next year, but not for this year. That's definitely on our radar. And yes.
Appreciate all you do, as always.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Okay, can we move on to Parks?
For next year, you have the room. What's on the agenda for 2025 is holding up the room that the Democratic Committee of Republicans?
The Community Room?
Yes.
Everyone submits an application, first come, first served for the application. I, once the applications are in, they have until October eleventh. A email was sent out that once everybody's applications are in, then an approval letter will be sent.
Do you have something like on agenda specifically that you're going to utilize?
In what regard?
Like the community.
The Community Room is utilized by not only just the committees, but it's used by Girl Scouts, by Historical Arts, Whitehall Arts, Whitehall Historical Society. I think we utilize it for about twenty different people. So it's just the first come, first served, and then those items will go in. After October eleventh, when everything's due, everything will be sent out. Yep.
Ms. Rose, for the board, I submitted an application, submitted it to Ms. Paula. Did you get, did you get that?
They've never reached.
They didn't reach?
They've never reached us.
Yeah, I submitted it when we spoke.
I apologize.
No worries, I just wanted to make you aware.
I don't think Paula bought it.
Well, I spoke to Ms. Paula as well as your other colleague.
Well, I mean, I'll talk, I'll talk, I'll talk to her.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Parks, please.
Couple things have come up tonight that made me really kind of push this item. We talked about we didn't have to clean Doverdale. We talked about delaying the pool cover, we'll have to bid. And I know it has to be brought up and paid for out of next year's budget, but I'd like to start doing something with the steps at Prospect Park so that they're finished by next summer. It takes forever to go through the process. I have to, I'm going to make a motion that we put on next month's agenda to ask Gateway to start preparing plans for the project.
Appreciate it.
So we're now looking at four weeks to get plans out. And if you've been to meetings, you know, after the plans go out, then we have to advertise them, they have to be prepared and bid. It takes, which I mean, three months before we can ever say go ahead with this. But if we could get it started in January, get those steps started, we may be able to finish them so that the kids can use that for summer camps. I would ask for permission to put that on the agenda.
What's the motion?
All she wants to do is put it on the agenda for next meeting.
That we start preparing the steps.
Okay, all we need is a second.
I'll second that.
I second that, but Mr. Celester, I have a question regarding that. Since a citizen had brought it up during citizens' comments, I believe that that would allow us to waive the, well, let's put it on the agenda next time to have the engineer prepare an idea. Because it was gateway engineering, is my understanding, that condemned these very same steps. So they might actually happen to know at least a little bit of a ballpark about it to try to get the ball rolling immediately. Just because a citizen brought it up during citizens' comments.
We can always ask your engineer for a comment, but the fact that the citizen brought it up doesn't affect the requirements of Sunshine Act.
Okay.
To give you at least twenty-four hours prior to action.
Thank you.
On the informational issue.
Yes, yes, so be that as it may, yes, it still stands that this is a motion to make a motion, but I'm definitely for it. And if Scott, you could please prepare any information that you could for the next meeting, that would be spectacular. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion?
Mrs. Pugh made a motion and Miss Beath seconded. Mrs. Pugh made the motion and Ms. Worts seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close it. Okay, put it on agenda. You have anyone else? Say anything else?
No, that's.
Okay, a new business? I see one thing on your list here.
Yes, please, that's me.
Yours?
Hi, I have packets. Thank you, Courtney and Melissa. Okay, so as, I'm just happy to share how much of this I have to talk about, but I am passing out packets to council at this time for the Community Volunteer Initiative that I introduced about a month ago, we've been working on. Yes, 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 yes. I think I really want to read all of this to everybody, it's like seven pages and we all want to go home. But the purpose is to facilitate a connection between the residents of Whitehall Borough to foster a stronger community relationship and enable acts of service to assist our neighbors. Quickly how it works, residents wishing to volunteer to help people will register with Whitehall Borough as a volunteer. We have forms, we have online. Volunteers' contact information will be added to a database. The database will be organized by task, there is no fee. On the flip side, residents needing assistance will be able to register with us kind of in the same manner as somebody that needs help, as a recipient, identifying their needs. And then, once we have a bunch of people on this side and a bunch of people on this side, we'll be able to help match them up and furnish folks that are needing assistance with folks that are willing to assist. We are looking to start this with tasks eligible to be performed as snow removal, light landscaping, things like spring cleanup, grass cutting, and leaf cleanup. So we know leaf season is upon us, right? No indoor tasks will be performed. No tasks not explicitly listed above will be performed. I will note here, requirements is that for recipients be at least sixty-two years age or older or have a physical disability preventing them or limits their ability to perform the eligible tasks or be a military veteran. They must reside in Whitehall, they do not have the resources, family, financial, friends, to perform eligible tasks. We are putting the requirement for volunteers at age eighteen or above. We know that there are a lot of kids that want to volunteer and a lot of youth groups especially that want to volunteer. So we do have an avenue for that so that kids and groups and sports groups can sign up as long as there is an adult that will be with them. Again, nobody's going in-house, inside anything. It's all outside, it is all supervised and such. So council, I ask that you read the packet. Please come back with any, if there are any concerns, comments, additions. Are we able to maybe, how do we move forward now, Courtney, to make this?
Actually, I would suggest, as you said, that council review the packet, it's quite not likely, but there's a lot in there.
Review it, give it thought, and then I think there does need to be discussion at the October second meeting.
And then based on where that discussion goes, we could at that point vote to add motion to the next meeting or we would make tweaks and changes. But I would, I think the first step is to have the discussion and then the speaking.
My initial, excuse me, my initial concern obviously would be liability to the Borough.
Right.
So we have to make sure we look at this.
Well, and IRF has been involved in this process from the start to help write these documents.
Not only that, but I have given it a draft to our insurance company and they have no concerns as far as how this would, it would not increase premiums or anything of that sort.
Yeah, this was brought up by Mrs. Iker about, she wanted the Public Works meeting to, she actually had ideas exactly like this. I was wondering if we think that if it would be a great idea if the Public Works Committee gets together and, you know, kicks us around a little more and comes back next meeting. After all, Mrs. Iker was the one that suggested this.
I thought we talked about that one, that Public Works doing, people, volunteers doing Public Works jobs. This is not something we would ever ask.
So snow removal, light landscaping, grass cutting, and leaf cleanup are, don't go hand in hand with Public Works?
Snow removal, snow removal, light landscaping, grass cutting, and leaf cleanup are don't go hand in hand with public works?
No, not private property.
It's our private properties.
Those are employees doing jobs.
Okay.
Okay, we can all look at it and, uh-
Yeah.
I'd like to motion that the public works, um, committee gets together and brainstorm this a little bit.
I'm willing, of, of, of course, we're open to hearing suggestions from anybody.
Hi, I'm Jeff Marston, uh, forty-seven seventy Fritz Drive. Uh, with the, whoever's volunteering, when they have to sign a waiver so the member is not liable, reliable?
There's a number in the packet, there is, uh, draft waivers for both recipients and volunteers that have undergone review.
Very smart.
All that fun stuff is in there.
Yeah, we want to make sure everybody's protected, but, you know, in today's day and age, we have to make sure everybody, both sides are protected, both recipient, volunteer, as well as the borough. Um, you just, you gotta do all of this, right, to just help a neighbor. Really, that's what we're trying to do.
I could get real dicey.
We just want to help neighbors, right? That's all it is.
To, with, you know, snow removal, light landscaping, um, are, are the volunteers gonna have to bring their own equipment? Or will, that's where I was kind of just hinting on, you know, the public, will they be borrowing public works equipment?
No, they would not be borrowing anything. It would be between the resident volunteer and the resident recipient.
She's just convening, uh, the public. So it wouldn't involve any, any borough.
Yeah. The, as Mrs. Thomas and I have spoken, this is really about facilitating the connection and then the, you know, for example, you know, Mr. Crane, Jeff, if you guys, you know, were connected, whatever that arrangement aid is, is between you two. We're just facilitating.
Just a mutual agreement.
Yes, yeah. Just saying, hey, this person's out there and could use some help and this person wants to help. That's all we want to do.
Okay, good.
Thanks.
Uh, okay, is there anything else?
Who would, to answer Stone's question, I, I've been offering to have a public works public meeting and it, it's, it's been declined several times. Um, I am willing to actually have that public works public meeting. It, the next standing time would be Tuesday, the, the twenty-fourth. Mr. Veath, are you available?
I don't know, I can look. I don't know. I travel a lot, you know.
Okay.
I don't think we'd have to look, but also, what's the agenda?
The agenda would be-
Think about it and let us know. Cause it seems like you're just coming up with this just now, so.
Well, to, to see how, um, uh, this, um, volunteer, uh, committee might be-
What are you going to add to this that has been put together in a packet that was a lot of work done? What are you going to add to it?
We got a comment.
Yeah, to see how, how the, this might be, um, helpful for, for public works, uh, items because I've, I've suggested many, many a times that there would be people of, of certain levels of expertise.
To do public works jobs.
Let it, let it-
No, not to actually do their jobs. To, to advise them, to level up their skills, to, I don't know, go, maybe go to the union hall and, and participate in their trainings.
I believe Ms. Volk has a comment. Ms. Volk, the floor is yours.
Well, no, I mean, that's why we hire, uh, public works to do their job and the union, uh, members would appreciate very much of us getting involved in that. What Ms., uh, Mrs. Thomas has in mind is a wonderful way to facilitate, like she's already explained, you know, to have the, uh, people in need to be, well, the volunteers willing to give it. It's got nothing to do with the public works committee.
We're in borough, please.
Okay, for the record, yet again, it is stifled that, um, public works, uh, uh, public meeting would-
We don't care.
Have an agenda.
You don't care?
No.
Alright, can I get a motion for, a motion for Dr. J?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting, close, it's a eight.
I am paying for-